All right. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at 7:34. There we go. All trustees are present and accounted for with the exception of trustee Ursing, who may be joining us at 8:00 PM this evening. Has this been publicly noticed? Thank you. Special order of business, we have none this evening. Moving on to item five consent agendas. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion to approve by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion?
I'd like to remove item B.
Five B. Anything else?
E is in Charlie, and then I had a question about E isn't it?
Five C and five E. Let's see. And I'll pull a five G. All right. So motion to any, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of five B, five C, five E, and five G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Moving on to item six, items removed from the consent agenda. Five B, consider regular village board meeting minutes, May 1st, 2023. Trustee Kudo.
Yep. As I said in my email to village staff and the board, I don't believe that the minutes as presented accurately reflect what happened in the last meeting. There were some discussion that occurred that, and the meeting was paused, I think we all remember. And none of that is reflected in the meeting. So I would ask that the village clerk go back and add to those minutes and make sure that they're reflected. Upon looking at also the video from that night, the video is a mess. So it's, some parts are audible, some parts aren't. Focus with just half the board. But I think it's important to make sure that we're transparent and we have meeting minutes that accurately reflect what happened.
Was it, but this is just for my clarification because I apologize, I have not seen this email yet.
Cause I'm digging out. I'm not seeing it either. Is it in, did we receive it?
I saw it.
I hit reply all.
Oh, um. Okay, first, don't hit.
It was, it was, no, I can't, you can hit reply all, you just can't have a back and forth. Hit reply all so that you and assistant manager Anderson and clerk Harold saw it. When did it go on? I didn't see it.
It was in there, but assistant manager Anderson sent out an email, I think moments afterwards.
Oh, maybe she got buried.
Buried, yeah. Unless you expanded the whole chain.
So I asked the assistant village manager to take a look at the meeting minutes as presented and adjust them accordingly. But if they got buried, then that explains why I didn't hear back.
Did you go into detail in the email? Did you go into detail? Like, would you like to read the email since we haven't all heard it, read it?
I don't know that I went into great detail, frankly.
So you'd like the recess to be noted?
The, I think it's important to note the discussion as well as the recess.
So for purposes of discussion, I'm just bringing this, and I haven't read it or whatever, but one of the, so for the clerk's perspective, her responsibility is to record motions and actions. And we try to generally summarize the discussion and not having, and I also haven't seen her meeting minutes because I have not, they were concluded after I had left. But one thing I just want to be very conscientious about, and which is a big stickler point for the clerk's position, and I think which also has led to a lot of the turnover within the scope of that position. It is not my expectation of that person, position, that there is ever verbatim description or at length summary of what happens outside of motions at these meetings. Primarily because of the fact that there, there's video backup. But what I've also seen in the group, and this is not directed towards you or this request, because again, I don't know, but I just have seen where people be fairly not this board, but prior boards be rather demanding when it comes to meeting minutes. Primarily to to act as some role in mitigating disagreement among board members. And so I just want to let you know that that's never been, while at like, at this point, we'll take, the recess isn't in there, let's put the recess in there. But I guess I'd want some specifics in terms of what you're, what you're looking for. Because your discussion between the two of you didn't relate to a motion. Or did it? I mean, I have to go back and take a look, but I'm just like, I just want to, I don't want to set an unrealistic expectation because I've gone through a clerk, I've gone through most.
No, I understand.
You know?
Yeah, no, I understand.
And thankfully, I mean, she's not here, so it's not like, but I just want to be clear about that because I feel like with prior groups, I should have spoken up a lot sooner.
No, and I, I don't disagree with the general, the general practice of not doing verbatim. I mean, I remember reading those old minutes.
Well, minutes aren't supposed to be any reflection of, right?
I think that when you look at the exchange that happened, you look at how it happened, you looked at the fact that you had to call for a two-minute break, fact that we took a break. You know, when looking at the minutes, none of that is reflected in those minutes at all, as though none of it ever happened. And while I know that you say that there's a video backup, it didn't serve as well, as much of a backup in this instance?
Yeah, I'll have to go back and take a look.
It's, I mean, it's, you know, it is what it is.
Yeah, did it just, and this is just.
Yeah.
Did, could you only see like part of the board on the screen?
It only see.
Or could you see this?
You could see Ursing, trustee McCag, clerk Harold, and trustee Ursing.
I tried to watch it today and that's all.
I wonder if someone hit one of the settings.
I mean, the camera.
Trying to hear their recording today, it just, it kept buffering. Right about when this discussion was happening, it just. And I could listen to it.
I didn't have any issue with buffering or anything like that. When I watched the rebroadcast, part of the audience was cut off. I could still cap, I mean, I obviously attended the bulk of the meeting remote, so I was familiar with the trajectory. I didn't find it particularly difficult to follow, but.
Well, thank you for letting me know about the video, because typically, and this is just for a reference, not on this issue, but whatever is up there is what I see.
I didn't happen to be looking up there at that moment.
No, but it's so, because it's in front of me the whole time, and I'm used to, like, I've never, I've never seen an enemy, there's some difference. Um, that zoom in, like for the judge. I've never not looked like that all together.
Might I, we come back.
I was shocked. I don't watch them. All I need to watch this. Be people.
Okay.
I did have a point, though. I'm wondering, and I was thinking of doing this before, which is why I was going to try to watch recording.
Kathy, could you speak a little bit more into your mic, please?
I was going to propose a draft, but since I couldn't listen to it, I didn't feel able to do so. Because, I mean, that's what I've done. Like, I have a draft here, I pulled the minutes for a different reason, because I know specifically what I want to change about the minutes, and I would like to present it to the clerk and then have the board vote on it. And so I'm wondering if that would be amenable to you.
I'm, I'm.
And that would have to be amenable to the body.
The only thing that I want is an accurate representation and reflection of what happened in the meeting. So, I mean, there's beyond making it clear in the record, I have no other.
Like, are you comfortable presenting something at the next meeting for a possible draft, a draft, and we can vote on it?
I can, I mean, we could, it could be as simple as noting in the minutes that there was a break taken, and then we could try to direct people to the time that it synced up with the video, assuming that the video is working correctly. I mean, it doesn't have to be a back and forth verbatim of, you know, a four-minute exchange.
This is our supposed to be captured, so that is.
And I do, I do think that's something that we could really improve upon would be when those minutes are published, could we put where in the recording it? It would be a huge.
So on the minutes, we, and I don't have them in front of me, and I can't pull them up because I'm recording now, but typically the time is noted.
At the start of the.
In the minutes that we approve, it will indicate.
The time at which you guys discuss the item. So it's, if we can.
So that if you go to YouTube, you can quickly go from one to the other.
Well, if a meeting is an hour and a half, and you know that we talked about it at 7:50, then you know you're 20 minutes in.
Okay, so we, that is in our minutes, and it.
Yeah, we did that just for that reason.
Related, that's, yeah, that's the protocol.
Yeah, I mean, there's a part where it says, item number two of the park in question, trustee Kudo suggested changing the wording, and then it jumps to the agreed upon wording. We, I'd be okay fitting in the sentence that you just made, after that sentence, I'd be okay voting on that right now. You said noting in the minutes that there was a break taken during this discussion?
I think the time should be noticed, noted with the recess, and so if we can't identify that now, I would take a motion to defer the minutes and to get that brought back.
Then I'll move to defer the minutes.
I'll second that.
I just think it should be clear why, why the break was taken.
Well, I asked for it.
Pardon?
I asked for it.
Okay, so that will be in the minutes, all?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a manager, you all requested a two-minute recess.
And why you requested the recess?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, if you want me to bring, you want me to bring?
Yeah, that'd be great, if you don't mind, I mean.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
I'm going to look at it anyways, because now I'm interested in the video, and you know, Arthur's made me.
Good luck with that. I'm not gonna, yeah.
And just so you all know, the mic is fixed up there.
Oh, I just know where you're talking to it.
Wanted to lay that out.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll bring this back.
An item on the minutes. Six B. I abstained, and I would like to have it included, why? Because of, to avoid the potential conflict of interest. It just says that I, I said I wanted to abstain, and it's, I think the reason is in part.
Sure. So noted.
So I'll move that the minutes be amended to include that.
First and a second.
You're declaring, so we'll just do it next time.
This could be part of the discussion, which would give direction.
I'll just put in the red line for the next time.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Um, can we refresh my memory on who moved and seconded?
Oh.
I moved in the first.
Okay.
And I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
And then could, before we take a vote, could you direct us to the email since it was referenced? Trustee Kudo.
It's in the, it's in the email.
I don't have the email, or I'm having trouble finding it, so could you re-forward it?
May 11th.
Okay.
Following Chris Anderson's initial link.
Yeah, 11:10 AM.
I'll, I'll look it up.
Okay.
So it begins with.
That would be great, if you could.
Rebecca, you're on.
I'm on there, okay. Sorry, I'm through Tuesday morning. Monday.
Thursday.
Thursday. When the agenda comes out for the next meeting.
I'll go back and take.
Yeah, everyone, everyone is, all seven trustees.
Okay.
And all looks.
Okay.
As well as you.
I, yeah, I still am not seeing it. So if you could just re-forward the whole thing? I'd appreciate it. Okay, are we clear? All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now we are on to item C.
C. And that was trustee.
I had a question about that because I don't, I'm not familiar enough, and I see the planning director's not here. They specifically mentioned in here that this is not a sales event, and I don't know if that's relative or not, do we? Because we personally have gotten bids from this group, put in solar panels. So I think for them to be there with their trailer. I mean, I'm all in favor of public education, but to say that they're not there as a sales event. Do we have, can anybody sell anything if they put in their permit?
So I can clarify this a little bit for you, on the park and the beach permit, it applies to for-profit businesses. So the reason that they had to, you know, they were triggered to come in and apply for this is that while they're not selling that day, they are for-profit.
Okay.
Their focus that day is to provide education to the community, but they paid the fee associated with the permit, and then the per-day fee to be there within the park at that scope and time. Because there was a question that came up to me about, well, they're not actually going to sell a good while they're a for-profit business. So the ordinance was specifically drafted to account for those for-profit businesses and have them seek approval through the board at that time, so.
Then if the president is ready, I'm ready to make a motion.
I am.
I move to approve the park and beach permit for Arch Solar, July 10, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five E, consider St. Robert's Parish temporary license application. Trustee Stokebrand.
I just wanted to be clear, this is not only the liquor license, but it's also the cabaret? Because I saw a cabaret.
Yes, those should have, was there a cabaret?
I think last time, was it last meeting there was a cabaret?
Yeah, it's for the amplified sound.
Or are they both in this packet? It didn't jump out to me. I saw the one.
I think they're both here.
Oh, then yes, it would be for the alcohol license as well as the cabaret license.
Does it have to be agendized separately?
If we need to clean it up, I can make, I can make a motion, or do they just want to?
Yeah, the events on the fifth. Or no, the events on the second and the third.
The third and fourth.
And we meet on the fifth, sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, we need to convene a 10-minute meeting.
Unfortunately, I think, just because I do, the public notice if we're voting on an application, I know it was in the packet, but if it's not on the.
So could we make a motion to defer?
Can we approve the, I believe it's the temporary B?
Yes.
Even though it just says temporary license in the agenda.
Oh, since we have to pick the other one, perhaps we could just defer this, and then everything could be noticed, you know, to the fee with every detail.
But would it be more beneficial for the St. Robert's people to, whatever we can tonight?
It's, I mean, it's the legal counsel, so there's a mistake in the, the way it's agended, so it doesn't.
Because it doesn't say class B, I would just put everything together on one.
I'll be in touch with all of you, and who would like to maybe have some coffee with me at 8 o'clock for five minutes?
The morning.
I believe.
That's fine.
Public Works is meeting next Monday.
We aren't seeing next Monday.
So, yeah.
There will be, everything will be set up here. I mean, we could.
That's a.
Come at seven.
Great idea.
At the whole board at seven and do it on Monday.
Trustee Lynn, you weren't the best kid for nothing.
Thanks for the.
I did not know about a Public Works meeting on Monday.
Emergency Public Works.
Emergency.
Well, then we'll add heavy duty at the end.
Yeah, that's great, wonderful, great suggestion.
So I'll move to defer item, is that the appropriate motion then? I'll move to defer item five E as in Edward.
Do we want to say until, to May 22nd?
May 22nd?
Yes, please.
To a May 22nd meeting?
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, moving on to five G, consider park and beach permit for Shorewood Junior Greyhounds Baseball Club, May 26th through 28th, 2023. I just wanted to pull it because I contacted manager Ewall just to make sure, because I recalled that there's some type of charter about prohibiting alcohol at Spectre Field, and I wasn't sure, I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't contradictory. But she covered it from every angle, and it's all okay, which is great.
I will go back and look at the charter, but from what I learned about baseball, when processing this is that this is not the Little League.
Exactly.
They're utilizing the Little League's field. So they had to receive approval from the Little League in order to utilize the field. It's a different club. The Little League is not allowed, based on their charter, to have alcohol served at their games, which is something, I didn't know that either. So this is a different group who's requested to utilize that.
Even though a lot of the personnel are similar, the membership is similar, and the board of directors is similar, there's crossover between the two organizations, it is a separate one, so for that.
So because there wasn't it to. Well, because there was crossover, we also requested their 501(c). Stuff like that.
So I just wanted to be transparent and say that I had that conversation, but I would make a motion to approve this as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by President McCag, seconded by trustee Stokebrand. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Uh, motion carries. All right, item seven, public hearings, there are none. Item eight, citizens to be heard. Do we have, boy, we don't even have the lights on today. Okay. Moving on to item nine, new business, we have none this evening. Reports of village officials, village president. We have a proclamation for Public Works. Whereas public work services provided in the village of Shorewood are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of Public Works programs, including sewer and water systems, park and forestry maintenance, fleet and facilities maintenance, refuse collection, street maintenance and repair, traffic and streetlight system maintenance and winter operations, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of the residents of the village of Shorewood greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of Public Works personnel. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the village of Shorewood's Department of Public Works is greatly influenced by residents' attitude and understanding of the importance of their work. Now therefore, I am McCullough McCag, President of the Village of Shorewood, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the village of Shorewood, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize contributions which Public Works and officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Dated, Wisconsin, Shorewood, Wisconsin, this 15th day of May, 2023. Thank you. I don't believe I have any other announcements, but just for a point of reference, since I didn't see the email pertaining to the minutes, were other people aware that the minutes were going to be of an issue tonight and, and taken, taken out? So that was in the email? Okay. Other president, other officials?
Um, yep, I just wanted to say, make a thank you to the Shorewood Seed Group, and specifically Sarah Lehman for organizing the swing with Shorewood fundraiser for the schools. Went really well. Looks like they raised a pretty good amount of money, so, you know, just love seeing the support for the schools and all the parents. You know, and others supporters of the schools who are at the event. It's just great to see that we have a community that backs our schools so well, and is, and is so willing to donate money and time to support the schools. So just grateful for that, grateful that we have that in the village.
Yes, trustee Stokebrand.
I just wanted to thank the Shorewood Police Department for sponsoring the open house. I was able to stop by, and it was Officer Meyer's last, second to last day. Big smile on his face. And I think it was, there were people coming and going, and I'm just, I'm grateful for that opportunity, and I think others in the community are also.
Great, anyone else? Okay, I stand corrected. I did, I Googled for Chris Anderson, and it did come up. I don't know why I missed it. So now I'm up to speed. Village manager?
Included in your packet was the quarter one update on where we are with specific items. I don't want to belabor anything, but so it's out in front of you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now, or at any point in time you have a question?
I guess I think maybe I'm confused between the communication management plan, and then there's also a communication policy.
Yes, great question.
So.
Here's the difference. I'm sorry, I didn't let you finish. Do you want to know the difference? Okay, good. I was trying to read it. So the communication plan that we're doing, or the review of our overall, like what we do for communications, that's occurring with the university program. That is a project that is being managed by Chris Anderson, and then different members of staff are going to be working with the university program and reviewing all of our communication outlets, our policies, how we communicate. Our communication policy is actually something that started maybe 2019, where we started to document and, as a board, sign off on the policy to approve how we're going to communicate in different avenues. So there's currently about, it's on our, you know, website. We haven't touched it in a little bit, just because it, the assistant manager does it as time is able. The last discussion that I believe was covered in the communication management policy was signage on municipally-owned, municipal-owned property. But it covers things as mundane as, this is how email is used, this is how this is what our letterhead is, this is how, these are the slides we're going to use for PowerPoints, these are. So we tried to cover all of the, the knowns, but then there, you know, as you get deeper into the document, and there's an index that has yet to be completed that we have other items slated to be reviewed. And I can send, I can resend you that link in the Friday update, just to refresh your memory.
Maybe I'm looking for, do they fit together at all?
Well, the university program will review our policies that have been done today. Are completed today.
And looking for improvements and updates?
I don't know what, and what capacity, I mean, they're looking at how we communicate to see how we can improve on it.
And how do the two citizen boards relate these two communication plan and the communication policy? Because then I, I think we have a marketing. One meets monthly, another one meets quarterly advisory.
So there's a.
It just, it seems like we really need to work in this area, and I'm just, I think I've talked to a resident who is on one of those and is frustrated, and I'm just wondering, university is a three-year thing, and we're doing historic preservation, communications, and can we tell university, we want historic preservation first, we want communications first? Do we have any say in how they come back? Because I kind of feel like, like what are we, are we waiting three years for one thing? Do we know what's coming for second, third, when we end up for university? How is this going to be coming back?
So we should have an update from the university program sometime midsummer, because they're in the process of communicating on, you know, with. Mm hmm. So we should have, um, an update from the university program, uh, sometime midsummer because they're in the process of communicating on, you know, with the different professors. Right, just to kind of identify that landscape. So an update on that, and as we get those updates, we'll bring them to you because you're going to see them start coming up on work plans because they're going to require our time to complete. With regards to the frustration you mentioned on marketing, was it the leadership committee or the advisory committee?
I don't remember. Um, I just think there are groups that meet rather, my understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, they meet randomly. And I wonder if there's the momentum and the focus that helps them to be effective.
Mm hmm.
And then the other thing that troubles me so much is that our website is, is so bad. I mean, we just really need a website redesign. Among other things, the, the digitization of the minutes and the documents. I'm just wondering, how does this all fit together and when will residents see an improvement soonest and in what area? That's what would help me get my head around this.
Yeah.
Because it's a huge, I mean, you know, and we're not the only ones. I mean, he works in communications. I'm sure, you know, communications in this day and age is so segmented. Um, it's a really tough. Problem.
Mm hmm.
And we're not alone and I have no great insight. I'm just looking for help.
Mm hmm. I think we'll be able to provide better direction to you once we get that feedback from university. So we can explain to you what the timeline will, is going to look like and how that will work.
So we could get things from university on all three areas at the same. It's not.
We could.
Nope. Oh, do we know?
No, that, so that I'm going to go back to what I had related before. We're waiting for their, working with their faculty, right? And to see, and we're going to be getting an update from them. Midsummer. That was my last understanding. Yeah.
Uh, the other question I had about village manager, somewhere I lost the memo about what the execute brews committee, B R E W S?
Oh, sure. That, um, you know. Benefits.
Oh.
It, it's an acronym.
Internal employee.
It's, it's an, right, it's, it's a.
Employee benefits kind of thing. Okay, okay.
My apologies. I've never been able to keep that one acronym straight.
Okay. My other question was planning and development. I see housing plan, neighborhood loan program. I had no idea we were still, that's still on our list of things to do. I thought we had removed.
No, it's actually been, it's never been formally removed.
Oh.
That's why you're seeing it. It's not funded.
Okay, but it, for clarity, should we consider moving that from a? In the future?
Yes. That's why it's still there.
Do you need a motion on?
No.
What action?
Oh, I, I, there might be a disconnect.
Oh.
You were saying move it off a work plan.
Yeah, is there something we're actively?
And you, were you referring to repealing the policy?
Yes.
So that would be a CDA action.
Yeah, it would, would start with CDA. We just simply, it's inactive, so it's not hurting or harming. It's doing what we intended it to do. There's no money to fund the program. So we're not, we don't. We have a, a policy for it and the thought at that time was, okay, when we go to repeal that because it's policy related, we're going to do so when we know what we are going to do.
It's really just a placeholder on the, on the work plan.
Policy wise, it would seem to me that that's something we need to revisit. And I don't know where we'd start, but I have no indication from the three years I've been on CDA that there's any interest in continuing a neighborhood.
Oh, I agree with you.
It would take action to repeal it.
Okay, so we should, I, I would.
The reason why it's on the work plan is just to, when we get down there to bring it forward, to do that work through the committee and bring it to the board.
It's a placeholder and I guess I've been, that's probably, you're seeing my, um. I put placeholders in a lot of places because when I came in, it was really hard to track. If something left off, why? So it would allow us an ability, like when I see the landscape of a lot of our, that's changing over. One of the things that our municipality has never been geared for is how to build in some level of carryover of that knowledge and understanding.
Okay. And finally, then public works department. I didn't see anything mentioned there about the work that the department is doing on Lake Drive reconstruction. It seems to me that would be something, part on, part on their, something on their plates also.
Mm hmm. It is. I'll have her add that onto her plate. Because I know that she's working on it.
Thank you.
Yes, great suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, um. Before we move on, just now that we've finished this, I just want to go back since I'm just catching up with the email. I would like to just say, I, I'm glad that you brought it forward, trustee Kudo, um, and, uh, and trustee Soprian. It sounds like you had some feedback as well. And in terms of the minutes, I think, um, certainly, you know, noting that there was a recess. I did want to, I just want to note and remind the group that I apologized three times for what was a poor curse of words that. Resulted in trustee Kudo stating the way he feels, um, in that evening. And so my understanding was that. You know, we had resolved that disagreement. Um. And so I would hope that in noting in the minutes that there was a recess taken, taken, that we're not looking to insert more of a narrative. Um, because we did resolve the disagreement at the time. So I'm just going to put that out there because it, I didn't have all the information when we took it up earlier this evening. Um, and I really don't want to get into a situation with minutes. At a future meeting where we're, you know, relitigating or even litigating something. Um, I've been through that before and it's not a good use of anyone's time. So if there is anything that, um, trustee Kudo, you'd like to. You know, revisit outside a meeting, I'd be happy to do that with you.
I'm not interested in conversing this, I'd have on the record.
Okay, then if we need to, um. Point taken and we'll resolve this and we'll move on to future items of consideration. Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Um, are there any objections? We are adjourned at eight eleven.